Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ramkassun.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez. For Miss President.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call on Alderman Green.
Acting President Massey, I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session to discuss a litigation matter.
Second that motion?
Motion's been made and seconded, and we will now go into executive session. All right, any motion to come out of executive session? Motion by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we went in at 7:33, came out at 7:55. Approval of minutes?
We have the minutes from the August 1st, 2022, City Common Council meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence?
We have a notice of a public hearing from the Town of Walk Hill Zoning Board of Appeals for the Frito-Lay Project, and the public hearing be held on Monday, September 12th, 2022, at 7:30.
Received and filed. For the good of the city, anyone who wants to come before us and speak, you've got four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor DiStefano, members of the Common Council. As you all know, Kevin Gomez, member of the Middletown School Board. As you all know, today was the first day of school, and I think we are hopeful we're off to a great start, which I believe will be a promising school year for all of our children. And again, on Saturday, September 10th, the Middletown School District, in conjunction or in partnership with the City of Middletown and our outstanding police department, will be holding our back-to-school barbecue at Davish Park from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and there'll be a lot of wonderful activity there for our children and for our community. Our superintendent has been holding throughout the summer different meetings with members of the community, parents who wish to meet with her and discuss issues of importance. They could register by appointment. These meetings or these town halls allow members of the community to come and share what's in their minds, as well as allow everybody to hear each other out. These actually were, in fact, were inspired by a forum our Fair Funding Committee held back in December of 2021, where we had the Chair of our State Senate Education Committee, the Honorable Shelley Mayors, Assemblywoman Gunther, and other members of our community discuss the school financing process. So I believe we're going forward in good spirit to keep our community informed and allow a conversation for the good of our children. Okay? And in our Fair Funding Committee, we will be, we are looking at, to see whether we hopefully have more state funding for public safety. I know that the New York State Sheriff's Association, for years, called for a separate budget line to be provided so that there will have guaranteed financial resources for safety. With that, I want to credit and thank both the administration of Mayor DiStefano, as well as Town of Walk Hill Supervisor George Serrano and his predecessors for our partnership when it comes to the SROs. And hopefully, if we're able to get down the road, an independent state, independent line in the state budget, that would also help relieve some of the financial costs that our district and our municipalities have, have had to endure over the years. And finally, as you all know, our school board meetings are the first and third Thursday of the month. They're in this district website, as well as the school calendar. Both may be subject to change, but they're out there for elected officials and, of course, our parents. Everybody have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Remarks of the mayor.
You know, when you're having a drought, drought conditions, you look for something to happen that will bring the rain. And what better than to have Mr. Massey come back and bring miserable weather with him? But in this case, it was welcome.
Thank you.
So...
Was I?
No, but the rain was welcome. So we're still doing, we're asking people to not conserve, but to just pay attention to your water usage. Jacob will probably give an update. I'm not sure, he has calculations for today, but I believe we were in the mid to low eighties prior to today and yesterday, and, but just to use common sense, I guess, and try to conserve as much water as possible. But the rain is welcome. We want to also announce that in our Parks Department, John Bianchi had a thirty-something-plus years, has retired. John is going to stay on part-time as we transition the department. We're looking at the possibility of using the, putting the parks itself, the operation, the, you know, maintenance of the parks under DPW, and having the recreation aspect continue to be handled by the Recreation Department. In essence, John has been doing that. When Chris became Park Superintendent, we gave a promotion to John, or add a title because he was a union employee, to basically operate almost as a deputy commissioner of parks just for maintenance purposes. So we not only had an increase in, you had overtime, but you also had the stipend that we've been paying over the years. So in our charter now, I believe the Parks Department does come under DPW. Historically, the Recreation Department's handled it, but in conversations with Ray Lynn, we believe that during this, maybe a year or so of this transition, we'll see if we can operate with shifting some of those responsibilities, field maintenance, things that traditionally DPW doesn't handle, garbage pickup in the parks, all those things through the, through the DPW office, to see if it works. If not, then we have to go back to parks with a different skill set for the person who manages that, that certain staff. But all camps, everything else, you know, the majority of the work stays under the, under the rec program. Just a pilot project we're looking at, and I want to thank John for his years of service and also for staying on for the next year plus as we look at the different options that we're, we're going to have moving forward. The, Mr. Gomez touched on one event coming up, which is the event by It Takes a Village in the School District of the City of Middletown, and Fred Williams has been the coordinator on it. Fred's a member of the Middletown School Board, and he's really taken this project and, and made it something which I think will be really, really big, just due to the response on social media. Superintendent Creedon and myself are assisting in ways, but Fred has really taken the project and run. All of our departments will be, are participating in some way. I know the Recreation Department will have a table at the event, along with the Economic Development will have some materials there promoting some city programs, but for the most part, it is a, an event run by It Takes a Village in partnership with both the School District and the city. So I want to thank our Superintendent Amy Creedon and the Middletown School Board for their cooperation with us, and I think all of you would be welcome at the event. I believe they're going to have a program starting around 2:00, a brief program, so if you'd like to attend, that may be the time for you to attend. Also, to say thank you to the Run for Downtown group, Dave and Anna Madden, for another successful event in downtown. I believe they had over 400 runners. The event is building back up to what it was. Before COVID, we had over 600 runners, but there were well over 1,000 people downtown for the party and for the post, post-race event, and it was very well attended, and I believe everybody that attended was very happy. The weather was great, and we were all enthusiastic about seeing all these large groups of people back in downtown. Jacob has advised us through our chairman, myself, the chairman, Jude Jean-François, and Mr. Toewell met before the meeting, and Jacob gave us an update on the paving, and I'm sure Jude will go into it a little bit more. And I want to thank the DPW and the workers for their efforts. They did a great job in getting the, the streets done, especially the targeted areas for the race, because some of the streets were part of the race activity, so they had to really move during that really hot period of time, and black topping in that heat really didn't go together too well. So thank you, Jacob, and thank your, the men in your department for the, for job well done. Also upcoming events are on 9/13, the Wall That Heals will be coming into the Middletown area. It's going to be at the, over by the Mount Carmel and St. Albert's area, and if you're not familiar with it, you can go on the city website. It's at the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Soccer Field from the September 15th through the 18th. It's arriving on the 13th. It'll be escorted from Angry Orchard that day, and more details will be posted on our website. But it is something that goes around the country, and there will be, again, programs offered during that period of time. So I would encourage anyone who has an opportunity to go visit the Wall That Heals during that period of 15th through the 18th. Also, on September 17th, Senator Scoofus here on the Aerie Way Park will be hosting his community events where he brings together different not-for-profits and different organizations and to make themselves available, like it's also a barbecue, free to the public, but the, the idea being that bringing all these different organizations, these public service organizations, together and as one, he's done in other communities that he represents. And as you know, hopefully, at least from my perspective, hopefully, he will be representing us in January. As you know, Senator Markucci is not running, and since he closed his office back in March, April, Senator Scoofus has been kind enough to open his door for here, for us here in the City of Middletown, not only on constituent referrals, but also on government referrals, where we need assistance with Albany. He's been the guy to go to, along with Assemblywoman Gunther. So I need to put that on the, one of the reasons why we're doing this event with him is because of his outreach to the city and to the, to our constituents. Also, welcome back to school. The Chief, I hope, will probably address a little bit about school buses and, and public safety, and, and to ensure that people do follow the, the rules, especially when it comes to passing school buses. And he can go into a little bit of detail on what he plans to do with people that do that. And also, one last item that I had to talk about was the grant announcement through Speaker Carl Hasty and Assemblywoman Gunther. They were down to announce a million-dollar grant to both the City of Middletown, the Town of Walk Hill, and a small portion of that to the Town, to the City of Middletown School District, in which the superintendent talked about her program. Kevin will probably address a little bit of the program that the school will be doing with the 50,000, but the 450,000 will be going into a camera expansion project in our downtown, in the greater downtown area. And the Chief may want to speak more detail on it, but I want to thank Assemblywoman Gunther for her efforts, and along with Speaker Hasty. It is a public safety issue, but it's also protecting the assets. We've made significant investments in and around our city, and these cameras not only deter, but they also help solve crimes, but our use primarily is, you know, we've always fought perception issues in our downtown, so I'm sure it'll help with that, but more importantly, I think it'll protect our assets and protect our people, just another way of, of keeping the city safe and keeping our residents and our visitors safe in our downtown area. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Anyone, any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, go on, Alderman Tobin.
The Frito-Lay Project, did you know anything about that?
What's that?
They mentioned something about a Frito-Lay project. Have you heard?
That's in the Town of Walk Hill, I think.
Town of Walk Hill, oh, okay.
We're getting a note, just notice of a public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the, I think it was something to do with lock coverage.
Oh, okay.
But it's a, it's a Town of Walk Hill project.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Marks of Department Heads. Economic Development Director Bruni, please.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to remind everyone that our Office of Community Development, our Small Business Loan Program and Housing Rehab Loan Program and Grant Program, please call the office if you want to learn more about it, 346-4170, or go to our website. As you can see throughout town, there is rehab going on through our Community Development Block Grant, so if you own a home in the City of Middletown or want to open a business in the City of Middletown or expand, please call our office. Also, this Saturday, we have the Stylistics performing at the Paramount Theater. Tickets are going well, and please, again, check out our website or call for tickets. And I want to also thank the, the crew from the summer, all the work that was done with the concert series, the fireworks, the Run for Downtown, all other events, the farmer's market, Stephanie, Eileen, and Joseph, they were, they're a great team to have, and they worked hard this summer, and we got more events through the fall and also with the Paramount, so I want to thank them publicly for all their hard work and dedication to, to the department. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner, Commissioner Twill.
Good evening, all, and Alderman Massey, welcome back.
Thank you.
I will start off reporting on the reservoirs. It's been a concern of ours, like the mayor just stated, because just, we've been having unusually dry season. The last couple of days of rain, they're really welcome. Probably by tonight, we will have about three inches over, over the two days since it started, which is, which is very good. We will not see the results in our, in our reservoirs until, for a couple of days, because it takes, it takes a while for them, for the rain to come down, the stormwater to come down to our reservoirs and hopefully build it up a little bit. So at this time, we are at 82% full. That's where we are. Like the mayor said, just remind the public, please, all the time, not only today or tomorrow and whenever it rains, or even drought or non-drought, try to conserve water all the time. You know, it's a very limited resource, resources, and, and we want to protect it and preserve it and as much as possible, so don't waste any water. If you have any leaking fixtures in your house, please fix them. You know, that goes for me too, for my household, for everybody. It's not like, you know, just keep that in mind. These drips, they add up very quickly. We go through a lot of work to try to find any even minimal leaks within our system, dig up the streets and try to fix them. And lately, we've been working on water main breaks, and when you have water main breaks and break, and we have an old system, sometimes it's very hard to isolate it, and people, they, you know, complain, how come nobody told us there's water main break? How come, you know, you're interrupting our water? Which is, we understand that and we feel the pain, but it makes you appreciate when, when there is no water. So please, conserve and preserve our natural resources, especially the drinking water, and subscribe to an Excel. It's on our website. The mayor talks about it all the time. The police chief talks about it all the time. It takes less than a minute to subscribe, and then any event that happens, you will get a, you'll get a message. Most likely, you know, good events, but also an emergency, water main breaks, water interruption, traffic detours, or something like that. Most likely, we will send out an Excel right away. So please, take a minute in there, go to our website, subscribe for it, it's worth it. You'll be prepared, you'll know what's going on. Another thing I just want to touch on, the sanitation, and then the mayor and I will make a presentation before the, before the, before the DPW committee and then eventually before the council. The mechanical armed trucks, first of all, I want to thank you all, on behalf of the mayor and myself. Thank you all for the support, for getting those new trucks for us with the robotic arm. It's been a great success for us. We've been finishing the routes much faster than before, and, and it's really, and, and the recycling, blue cans that we've been giving out to people, it's been promoting and encouraging recycling. However, we just want to touch on something in here. Please read very carefully the literature that tells you exactly what to recycle. The recycling that we are collecting, it's called dirty recyclables, because there is no market for them, because our citizens or residents, for good reason, I'm sure they are, good motivation, they're trying to recycle as much as possible. So if they don't know, if it's doubtful, they put it in the recycling can. That will end up really hurting us, and we'll end up paying more money to get rid of recyclables that are not clean. So once, we're going to have, the mayor and myself, we're going to be doing a major push to educate the public about what, what is recyclables and what is not, what's acceptable and what is not. And we urge you to please stay with it and give us only what is approved for recycling, otherwise, we'll end up losing money. And the people who are collecting it, sometimes, we don't know what they do with it. We're, we're not sure, just sorting it out is going to be worthwhile for them, so we don't know what happens to it. But anyway, it makes, make a long story short, we're going to be doing this campaign very soon, and please pay attention to the literature that we sent to you guys through the water bill and through an Excel and through our website, and just stick to what is, what is acceptable as recyclables, and maybe rinse the can and so on and so forth. We'll get into that in greater detail. But make a long story short, that's the message I want to send to you guys tonight, is recyclables, stick to the literature that we already have on our website, but we're, we're already going to be, we are going to give you more literature about it and more education so that we can, we can basically generate some revenue out of it rather than losing funding and paying money for it. Another subject is the annual paving program, like the mayor said, and I want to thank him for complimenting the men, he always does, and he feels what they go through, and it's very much appreciated from all the men when they hear you guys giving them their, your support and knowing that you recognize the effort and the pain that they go through to get the job accomplished. And that goes for our subcontractors too, who did the paving. So with that being said, we have concluded our paving program. It was budgeted at $2.5 million in there. You may notice that we have done some, some handicap ADA ramps at all the places that we milled and paved, and so it's about $2.5 million. None of it came from our budget. It came from help from the state, and for that, we appreciate the state and what they've done to us. So another $2.5 million, it wasn't part of our operating budget or capital budget, it's given to us and we used it, and will continue to use it in the future as well to pave and improve our city. Curbs and sidewalks project and the intersection, as you can see them, they're moving along very well. The water line project in there, the paving, I know I did say in the middle of the month, roughly, give or take, we're going to be paving Monhegan Avenue. Now it's going to be between middle of the month and the end of this month to mill and pave. The council president calls rodeo.
I'm sure he'll be excited.
Yeah, so we're going to be, we're going to be milling and paving that rodeo very, very, between the 15th and the end of the month.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Alderman Johnson?
Getting back to the recycling, when I was at the center on Monhegan, I see you've reorganized that. What, what is your goal with the way you put those bins there? Is that part of what you're trying to do?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing. We've done that already. Before, we were used to, you know, allow people to come and dump their recyclables in there in an open, open, open container, in the open concrete container, open concrete bin, and then we had to go in there and scoop it, put it on a dump truck, and then take it to the, to the county. So now what we've done is we installed dumpsters in there, and the dumpsters, they are suitable for our trucks, our packers, to come pick them up, dump them into the packer, which is the garbage truck, then compress them. So instead of just taking one truckload of loose recyclables, now we have compressed, compressed recyclables in there, which is one trip, instead of going three, four times, we go one time with the packer, because it's all compressed recyclable material. So that's the change that you have noticed.
Great, and it looks great, besides when you go in.
Yes, yes, it's much cleaner, but also it's much more economical for us to do.
Thanks, I'm great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Police Chief, Chief, who wants you?
Good evening. Just a few things this evening. First, I'd like to just notify the council and members of the public that we have a new addition that just joined our department today. It's a member of Independent Living. They provide us an outreach coordinator on a full-time basis, trial basis, hopefully it's going to go for some time, that is going to work with us in the field and in the office doing some follow-up and outreach for mental health. Seems like a very energetic young lady. Today was her first day with us. She's becoming familiar with Middletown, familiar with policing, so we look forward to her partnership and the partnership with Independent Living. It's very similar to the partnership that we have with Fearless, which is the domestic violence coordinator as well, where they do some follow-up and continued follow-up with people that need those services. In regards to opening of school, it's an exciting day for many, nervous for some others, hectic for many. Just like many first days of school, traffic becomes an issue for us. You know, everybody's, you know, wants to get there, get their children there safely. We had a, quite a traffic scene this morning, however, the people that were out there for us said that it's moved smoothly, it just took a little bit, and they did get it cleared up very, very quickly. What I ask of the residents is to please follow the direction of the police officers and school personnel that are out there. They have guides, and they, they're trying to guide people in a correct way to keep everyone safe. With that, also while residents are driving, please be observant of the children. A lot of children walk to school, they cross the roads, we do have crossing guards, but please be observant, take a few moments, slow down, pay attention to the kids, the buses. As the mayor mentioned, the enforcement of bus, people passing the buses, there's actually a resolution before the council this evening in regards to some money for the governor's traffic safety grant, that has a component for enforcement of passing school buses. So if that is passed and we receive the money, we'll be able to do some specific enforcement based on those funds. In regards to, actually just going back to school, I'd like to wish on behalf of the Middletown Police Department, all the students a safe and happy year. I hope they, they do very well. We're here for them, the SROs are in the school. We've met with the school personnel, the safety directors, and anything that we could do on our end, we are here to support and help with that. The camera project that the mayor had mentioned, that is a project that myself and Maria have been meeting with a vendor and their engineer, last month and a half, two months or so. I think it's a very robust project. I'm very excited to work with this vendor. Very, like, forward-thinking, he's not just building for what we're looking at today, he's building for the future in his plan, his proposal when he gets to us. As the mayor said, like, the perception, we hear that time and time again about perception, but I think what we're looking to implement here is going to cover a majority of the parking lots in the downtown, the walkways, the parks in the downtown. It gives us another layer of security and protection in today's environment. Sometimes people are reluctant to be witness to something or to notify us that they saw something, or cooperate with an investigation. Now with this additional video, it's going to help us prosecute cases and move cases forward. So we look forward to that. I think it's going to be state-of-the-art system. As I mentioned, the vendor, very forward-thinking, giving us some ideas that we didn't think about in the past, and just better coverage and future expansion. So we definitely look forward to that, and I, I think it's a, it's a great investment for the community as a whole, and it brings so much more security and safety to the downtown area. I have nothing else on this.
Any questions for the Chief? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation, Ms. Berthoff.
Good evening, everyone. First off, congratulations to John Bianchi, who recently retired. We will definitely still be seeing him around a lot. He's retired, but still with us and helping us out for another year, possibly more, so we're very appreciative of John and all his year of service and everything that he's done for us. Our maintenance department, pools are covered and closed this weekend, depending on how much rain. We are getting in the conditions of the field. Little League football is starting, so our maintenance guys are going to start getting the fields ready and prepped again for the Little League, for their fall season. Our field prep for all of our fall programming, they're also preparing, and with the rain becomes lots of mowing that they're going to be catching up on, that they didn't have to do all summer, so it'd be playing catch-up for the next week after this rain stops. And eventually, Thursday, Friday, early next week, they're going to be trimming back the trees surrounding the dog park. It's done twice a year. A lot of them start to just grow an overhang into the dog park, so they're going to be trimming around the perimeter to clear that up also. For the rec, our pools are closed. Thank you to all of our lifeguards. Nicole had a wonderful staff over there. Danielle McAvaney, who was a saint this summer, who helped us out. She got us the lifeguard, she ran a class that was, we were able to open both pools. As you know, a lot of towns and private pools, they weren't able to open because of the lifeguard shortage, but us running the class was night and day. Those brand-new guards did amazing. If any of you went to the pools, they were on it. We had great managers, great supervisors, and again, special thank you to Danielle, who did a lot of our in-house services to our lifeguards. our lifeguards. It's very helpful, pretty, we had, it's just in the way that we handle our events at the pools that it made a difference this summer with having Danielle there and all of her years of knowledge with the pool and helping us out. So thank you to her. Fall programming registration is up on our BASS site. We have adult tennis clinics, cheerleading clinics, soccer clinics, breakdancing, Rising All-Stars basketball, crochet clinic, and lacrosse clinic. Those are all paid programming. Our free programming that we have for our community, which is partially funded by the Orange County Youth Bureau, we have teen boxing, teen basketball open gym, youth open gym, youth basketball open gym, and youth fitness classes. And those are all the free programming that we have for our community. We are gonna start up our busing again in two weeks, so we're switching it to Thursday nights. Contestants working with Mid-City to get the pricing, and again, thank you guys for voting that in and seeing that through to give the kids who don't have the transportation an opportunity to go at least once a week to our facility to use our, to utilize our Our Facebook and our Instagram, we are gonna be announcing soon our Halloween festivities that we have planned for Saturday, October 15th. Nikki wanted me to say it's gonna be a spooktacular time. The mayor's youth council is also starting up this month. We have two more, two more, the reading and crafts at the farmer's market in September and October, where you can catch Ms. Sharon and get a story, and the kids can do a craft. We're also gonna be attending a unity fair with the YMCA, we're gonna have a table there. Also this weekend with the back-to-school event, we're also gonna have a table there and be a very vital part in this Saturday's events. And last, before you, there's two donations. We'd like to thank the Orange Runners Club for making a donation to us, and also the United Way, who helps, their donation helped offset the cost of the Cops and Kids Field Day. So thank you to those two organizations. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, superintendent, appreciate it. City assessor, Ms. Haley, please.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything to report tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, everybody. Just as a reminder to the community, hunting season is upon us, and the city clerk's office is available to purchase hunting and fishing licenses. We're open from 8:30 to 4:15 for all of your hunting needs. And on that light, on the resolutions tonight, there is a resolution being put forward with a company named Permedium that will allow us to securely and safely accept vital record applications online, and you'll be able to pay for them online as well. We'll still have to mail you the official copies in the mail, but this will dramatically decrease the amount of time that it takes us to turn those types of products around for our community, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Public hearings and grievances.
We have a public hearing tonight on local law number six of 2022. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 6, 2022, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible. Come in council chambers, second floor, 16 James Street, beginning at 7:30 PM, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the recently passed local law number six of 2022 regarding a law updating the commissioner of assessment charter provisions. Full text of the local law is available in the common council clerk's office, 16 James Street, here at city hall and on the city website.
Public hearing is open. Anyone from the public have any comments, questions? Anyone from the council? Anyone online? Okay. Motion by Alderman Witt and the seconded by Alderman Tobin to close the public hearing. All in favor? Thank you. Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of the Alderman. Alderman Witt.
Thank you very much. Just to first follow up on what the mayor was talking about in terms of that million-dollar grant, the school district is receiving $50,000, and that money is going to go towards operating in office space on North Street to do community outreach. Superintendent Creedon has been very proactive in terms of reaching out to the community. This is an opportunity for people to have a space where they don't have to necessarily come into the buildings, it's in the center of town, and it's gonna be near, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it's gonna be near the Orchard and North Street intersection towards the square. So look for that to begin soon, I would imagine. The second thing is, we're going to have our first ward constituent meeting on Wednesday, September 14th, at 6 o'clock here in these chambers, 6 to 7. So if you do decide to come, we'd love to see you, and please enter, if you can, through the side door, which would be the first federal parking lot. That's probably the best spot and gives you the most room. And the last thing would be, just 'cause I do know our audience here, the Middletown Port Jervis football game will be held on Friday, September 16th, at Middletown, at 7 o'clock at the stadium. We have the bell, we'd like to keep it, and I can just tell folks that, excuse me, at this time, there are no restrictions in place, masks or anything like that, no attendance restriction, so it'd be great to get four, five thousand people there, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. First off, congratulations to John Bianchi, thanks for sticking on for a little while, but definitely someone will be missing around. Run for downtown was awesome, thank you mayor for touching on that. It was a great day, weather definitely held out for a while, we got a little sprinkle, but it felt good after four miles. Alderman Kleiner and I will have our constituents' meeting here Monday, the 12th, at 7 PM in the council chambers. And then just congratulations on the first successful day of school for everyone in Middletown. I know some other districts were back earlier, but you know, traffic headaches will alleviate over time, I'm sure, and things will get back to smooth sailing, but you know, congratulations to all the kids and hope you have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you, Acting President Massey. I will repeat what Alderman Witt said about the Erie Bell Game against Port Jervis on September 16th at 7 PM. We are having our Class of 1962 Sixtieth reunion the following day, and we hope to have some members from that 1962 Middletown football team at the game and out on the field before kickoff. That was the last undefeated Middletown football team, 1962, and it's the only undefeated team in the last hundred-plus years. So I think, I hope it will be a good night, and I wanna, you know, thank them and congratulate that, members of that team who are still around, and hopefully some will show up. Also on the 17th, and I know these things because that's the day of reunion, is the Town of Walk Hill is having their 250th celebration, and they're having a parade at 10 AM, and it's gonna go from Orange Bank and Trust over to Galleria. And then all afternoon, they'll be in the Galleria parking lot with different events and celebrations. The Wall That Heals, if you don't know, that's a three-quarter model of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Washington, DC, was very controversial at the time, has come to be one of our most certainly cherished monuments. And if you're planning on seeing it, it will be there from the 15th through the 18th, but on Sunday, the 18th, it closes at 2 PM. So if you're gonna plan on going on Sunday, you need to get there before 2:00. Otherwise, it's open day and night from the 15th on. Also on the Town of Walk Hill, on their website, they have been recommending, not enforcing, but recommending water restrictions, so they, their website has a pretty good list of ways to save water. And don't let the three inches of rain fool you, we've had a heck of a drought this summer, so we need quite a bit more. And as the mayor says, it's, and commissioner says, it's a good idea to conserve water It's, I want to also thank John Bianchi and wish him good luck in his retirement, and I guess he's not getting out of here for another year, but he is retired. Thank Dave Madden, the run for downtown, it was quite a nice turnout, mostly runners this year, and hopefully as we get back in the swing, there'll be more people to just join in the festivities. And lastly, I just wanna recognize the passing of Celeste Van Fleet. Celeste was 98 years old, soon to be 99, and had been living the last couple of years in a home in California. But she and her husband, Robert, were just major forces in Middletown. Robert was a journalist, he was early, early on fighting AIDS and speaking out about the need to fight it. I believe he at one time was a common council clerk. He was just very involved in the city, and Celeste, I think, outdid him in her activism and in her sports and everything she got started in Middletown. Of course, we all know her as the heritage trail advocate from the beginning, and the shade tree person who would come in here and tell us if we didn't know what was going on and what needed to be done. So I just wanna recognize her passing, send her condolences out to her family, but her many, many friends in Middletown, we will definitely miss Celeste. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ramkassun.
I'm just gonna be brief. It's the first day of school today, I think we all know, everything runs a little long, everything's a little hectic. It's, for the most part, besides, you know, the rain, the dismissal, and the usual of the buses and getting used to our routine, I think we had a great day. The kids were great, everything really went smoothly at school. As for parents, I think you've been here more than 25 minutes, you understand how our first two weeks look. We have a monumentous task with getting as many students as we have home where they belong, with whom they belong, and I think we do a great job. So a little grace, a little kindness for staff, everyone's doing their best, that's all I have. Have a good night.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I was sorry to hear about Celeste. I mean, I worked a lot with Robert Van Fleet back in the tumultuous school board days, which we don't have anymore, and that's the ending of an era for sure.
Alderman Johnson, can I interrupt you just a second? I know, because I watch these meetings, and I know a number of people have mentioned to me. You are so far back from the mic that unfortunately, they really don't get to hear what you're saying.
I thought that was an attribute, but I guess not.
No, that's, that's the truth, and I do watch them, and it's difficult to understand. Of course, I'm hard of hearing anyway, but.
Duly noted. This doesn't bend. So as far as Bianchi, let's just say Bianchi rocks and move along. If you followed what's happening in Jackson, Mississippi, this is a DPW comment, so. Since I've been here, you pay a lot of attention, talking to the commissioner of public works, keeping the water treatment plant in shape, upgrading it, doing all the infrastructure. And when I listen to what's happening in Jackson, Mississippi, which apparently, according to the media, is a major example of mismanagement, of not keeping up infrastructure, of now having a water treatment plant that doesn't treat water, of having 150,000 people with no potable water and some of them with no water, it's just a pause for me to reflect on how fortunate we are with the way we keep everything up in Middletown. And when you look at Jackson, Mississippi, you realize it should not be taken for granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-François.
Thank you. Like the mayor mentioned and the commissioner, our street department, these guys work hard all summer. It's been very hot, I'm pretty sure they contribute to a lot of the water drought that they have by drinking so much water, because Wednesday heat up on you, no matter what, how much water you drink, I mean, it doesn't really, it just hake on you. You know, our grass, I only cut my grass twice this year, and that's, you know, that's the kind of heat we've been having this year. For these guys to work so hard, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I really thankful for all the hard work that they put in. You know, this department really rock. John Bianchi, we've been friends for a good amount of time, and John, I couldn't think anyone else that could do the job that John does. He's definitely, if you're listening, John, you're definitely gonna be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tobin?
Yeah, just did what everybody else said, you know, I totally agree, driving with caution. I drive to work the same time while the kids are out, and you know, it could be the person you're behind is a senior driving to school for the first time, or a bus driver that's learning the route, you know, so please, we just need some patience out there. If you really need to get to work early, leave a little earlier, because sometimes it's hard to see, it's raining, and we, our kids are out crossing the streets and getting their school buses. I'd like to thank John Bianchi for his years of service, you know, he'll be missed. And to mention, remember, just Kevin Gomez is on the Fair Funding Committee, I was part of that years ago, we had a big coalition between the school boards, the administrators, and teachers, countywide, but it kind of, after the, I guess we got the foundation aid, it seemed to fall apart. I mean, I'm glad to see that Middletown is still doing it, but I'd like to see maybe the countywide, you know, effort pulled back up again to push for funding for the region. That's all I have.
Thank you. New business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to accept a $14,400 grant from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, excuse me, Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any comments or questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Wright, authorizing a $3,000 budget transfer for the purchase of chlorine.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, accepting a $477.50 donation from the United Way of Dutch's Orange Region for Cops and Kids Field Day.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green and seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ramkassun, authorizing a $106,473.50 budget transfer for parking lot paving.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ramkassun, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a $10,000 budget transfer for overtime at the wastewater treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing a $5,000 budget transfer from an Alderman salary.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Comments, questions? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Abstain.
Alderman Kleiner abstains. Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing an agreement with Permedium to provide an online application for vital records requests.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Ram Cassune. Comments? Questions? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassune.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing a grant application with the dormitory authority of the State of New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Comments? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassune.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.[1599.87]